Good morning. Can you hear me? Well, I have the opportunity to like to share with you that Mayor Snyder has been receiving an award on October 7th at 4:00 PM at Christian Hospital in Aitram. Lifetime Achievement Award. We are honored to present him with this award because of the longstanding outstanding achievement in Florissant and North County. We don't know if anyone else is most deserving. Of course, we're all welcome, you're all welcome to attend. That's at 4:00 PM on October 7th in Aitram at Christian Hospital Northeast. Let us now pray. Eternal God, God of all creation, creator of heaven and earth, all things past and present, we give you thanks for the gift of this day and for the gift of all of our days. We give you thanks for allowing us to come together here in this place once again this year for the Mayor's Town Hall for senior citizens. Thank you, oh holy God, for Mayor Snyder for sponsoring this event and for Ms. Peggy Hogan for coordinating the program and for providing services to seniors. We also give you thanks for all those organizations, agencies participating and providing information that can be helpful to all of those who are here this day. Oh gracious God, we pray that you bless all of them and all of us who are here this morning. We pray that you keep all of us in your care this day, this night, and forevermore. And now, oh holy God, we pray that you bless the food about to receive and those who prepared it. In your mighty name we pray, amen.
Please stand and join Chief Lowry and I in Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before I turn the, be seated, before I turn the program back over to Peggy Hogan, I'd like to invite Judge Boyle to come up and say a few words because he has to leave us because he has other business, he has to preside over court, and I think that is a very important thing. We have court, he has court at 10:00 AM, so he has to go get ready for that. Judge Boyle.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm gonna let the judge tell you a little bit about our new court building that we just christened and opened up and we're having court there today, right?
Yes. Well, good morning. It's good to see you all, and I will, knowing that I am standing in the way between you and the breakfast buffet, will be very brief, thank the mayor for shoehorning me in here. Yes, I am Dan Boyle, I am the municipal judge here in the city of Florissant. I've been doing that since 2011, so thank you all very much. We are holding court at our new court facility, and it is a wonderful facility that the city has seen to have renovated and put in use just for the courts and with a police substation. We are located at what had been the Dick Weber bowling lanes, so I'm sure many of you remember that from fondly from years ago. No, the bowling lanes are no longer there, no, they didn't leave any of them for us, so that is not there. But we do have a really good dedicated space for the courts. For years, for, boy, as long as anybody can remember, over 25 years, the court office has been in one location, but we've had to hold court in another. So after every court session, we always have to break down, move everything back, take things to the office, we have to set up for court in advance. But now, we have a court office and a courtroom in one location, we don't have to move. It's a great facility that can accommodate everyone that would possibly be on the docket, and we've got a space where people know where they can find us on a daily basis. So it is a, it's a great improvement. I want to thank the city and the council and the mayor for the foresight to be able to work with us to get this, to make it a reality. So again, I want to thank you all very much for being here this morning, and thank you for giving me a moment, and I will turn it back over. Have a good day.
We're ready to start our Mayor's Town Hall meeting with Mayor Snyder. Let's welcome, welcome Mayor Snyder. Thank you.
You know, I announced that I'm not running next year, and I ask a very capable person to run, somebody that was born here and has served the city for a long time, but this isn't a political meeting. But he is, he is here today, and you probably know, everybody knows who they, who he is. So this will be my last senior town hall meeting, and it's been a pleasure serving you as our mayor and as your mayor. Great honor. You know, my adult life has been more than 50 years of service to either the nation or the city. I served nine years in, with the US Navy, four and a half years on active duty with the Navy SEBs in Vietnam twice, and then Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, and then four and a half years in the Navy Reserve where I was commissioned Civil Engineer Corps Officer after getting a degree from Rala. And then Mayor Egan hired me shortly after I graduated from college to be city engineer. I was city engineer for a couple of years here, and then shortly after that, I was elected to the city council in '79, served that for 32 years, and then I was elected to be your mayor in 2011. So that's about 52 years of service to either the nation or the city, and I've enjoyed all of it. You know, I wanted to follow my dad, he was a World War II Navy chief. My son retired as a Navy chief, so we have three generations of Navy in our family, and you know, I didn't have the right stuff to be chief, so I still outrank him because I got a commission. One thing I really liked about Florissant when I came here was the lack of putting on airs, the lack of snobbishness, the tolerance for one another. And I thought that was refreshing, and I really, really liked it, and I don't see that everywhere else. I think I noticed it in Rala, Rala seemed to be that way to me, laid-back kind of a community, and Florissant's that way, but I don't see that maybe places like West County or Central County or whatever. I just see where people are trying to be better than everybody else, and that's seems to be on the front of their mind all the time. I know we all want to succeed and everything, but here in our, in our area, it just seems like people, they talk about other things that are more fun, and I've always liked that. And I think it's because we've, we've had two centuries of people liking each other, over two centuries, with the French founding village in this area back in the late 1700s, and the French welcomed the Germans and the Irish and everybody else, and they got used to it. Our demographics have been changing for two centuries, and we're kind of used to it, and we kind of like each other. You know, when Ken Fowler decided not to run, I ran for city council, I enjoyed being on the city council a lot. You know, I was reelected 10 times, and then with the two times as mayor, I'm gonna retire 13-0, and so 13's my lucky number. Another, another lucky number is six because it just so happened coincidentally that when I ran for council, there were six candidates in an open race, and when I ran for mayor, there were six candidates in an open race, and that's kind of an interesting coincidence. You know, to be in this business, you kind of gotta have a thick skin, but I hope that some of the toughness wears off when I retire next April, because I want to soften up for my grandchildren. Rach and I are expecting number five next month from Claire in South Dakota, and she also has a two and a half-year-old son, Alex, who was born four days before our only granddaughter, Cleo, who owns the family, and her uncles and me, she's got us all, you know, controlled. And she's, her older brother is Henry, he's nine, and we went to Kansas City recently to celebrate Cameron's first birthday, and he's Julie's son. And some of you know some of my children. So I'm gonna have more time for fitness and travel, golf, and other outdoor activities and sports, but no football. I'm done with football. But speaking of golf, how many golfers do we have in the audience? Can you raise your hand? Not that many? Wow. Well, I know Jackie Pagano's a golfer, and so Jackie, Shonda Kopf, he's the president of Rotary. And by the way, Rotary has their auction in early November. Chief, do you know the date? He'll look it up, he'll give it to you later. But Rotary has an auction, they don't own the, they don't have the license office anymore, so please support Rotary's other fundraising activities so that they can help those that are less fortunate in our area, like the Mary Grove Home for Children, you know, abandoned and abused children, the Sheltered Workshop, Team Food Pantry. But anyway, Shonda Kopf is the president of Rotary, and he's told me, you know, and he's a doctor, he said that golfers, us golfers should wear two pairs of socks when we play golf, in case we get a hole in one. You know, I just turned 70 in July, and Mark Twain had some pretty interesting things to say about turning 70. He said, "Before 70, we are merely respected at best, and we have to behave all the time. But after 70, we are respected, esteemed, admired, even revered, and don't have to behave unless we want to." I'd like to invite our representatives from, Chief Supple from the Florissant Valley Fire Protection District, just to say hello, say a few words, and we really appreciate the first responders that helped save lives and property here in our community, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I just want to remind you a little bit about the Florissant Valley Fire Protection District. We have three engine houses, and we protect a large portion of the city of Florissant, a large portion of the city of Hazelwood, all of Calverton Park, and a lot of unincorporated St. Louis County. All of our apparatus is ALS, and what that means, it's Advanced Life Support. So even our fire engines have usually two paramedics on there, and we can do everything pretty much that fire truck can do, the same as our ambulances. Our call volume continues to grow year after year. Last year, we ran, and this might not mean a lot, but we ran, had 9,000 runs just with our ambulances. That makes us probably the busiest fire district in St. Louis County. And because we're so busy, we've had to continue to uphold our transport policy, and I just want to remind you of that today, and that is this. If you're a resident of the city of, if you're a resident of the fire districts, we will take you to your choice of one of five hospitals. Those hospitals are Christian Northeast, Christian Northwest, DePaul, Mercy, or Mobap. Okay? For, if, a non-resident is in the fire district and calls on our services, we will only take them to three hospitals, DePaul, Christian Northeast, or Christian Northwest. So those are the hospital destinations, and we have to do that so that we get our ambulances back in service for our residents. I can tell you this morning, on my way of coming here, all three of our ambulances were out, and we had multiple Christian ambulances in our district servicing our, serving our residents. Fall's coming up, remember, change your smoke, change your batteries in your smoke detectors. If you didn't come over and see us, I have a list over here, you can give us your name, your address, and your phone number, we will call you, we will come out, we will replace your smoke detectors, we'll replace your batteries. It's free of charge, it's a service we provide for you. Coming up in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna notice that all those good-looking firefighters are gonna be wearing pink shirts, and what that's for is, we want to remind you ladies, we've partnered up with SSM Healthcare, don't forget to get, have your mammograms, okay? I'll keep it at that, you guys have a great day, God bless you.
Do we have a representative from Hazelwood School District?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Natasha Baker, and I'm the Deputy Superintendent for the Hazelwood School District. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the wonderful initiatives that we have going on in our district and community. As you know, we have around 18,000 students that we serve across 30 different schools, and that includes our Early Childhood Center, as well as our Alternative Program, which provides an opportunity for students to have an alternative pathway to graduation. Additionally, what's exciting about last year is that many of our graduates participated in scholarship application programs, and they had a collective scholarship amount of over $30 million. In addition to that, our students also participated in volunteer community hours, and they had collectively volunteered for over 130,000 hours. So what that says about students in Hazelwood is that they really are engaged in the community. And so with that said, we have embarked on what we have called our Five-Year Strategic Plan. If you have an opportunity to stop at our table, you can pick up one of our trifolds. In our plan, you will see that we have outlined our mission and our vision, as well as our goals. Our mission is basically to build a culture of high expectations and excellence, and we have five goals that we're looking to reach over the next five years, and that includes improving student achievement, differentiating and expanding resources and services for students, as well as enhancing professional growth and maintaining fiscal responsibility. One of our primary goals is also to increase parent and community engagement. Our Five-Year Strategic Plan allows for us to focus on a comprehensive way to take our district to the next level. And one way for you all to be involved in our district is to participate in what we're calling our HSD Hero Volunteers. What we have over at our table also is Jerry Clifton, and she is a former staff member in our district, now volunteering half-time, and if you're interested in becoming a hero volunteer, you would have an opportunity to work one-on-one with our children in grades K through three, once a week, as a reading tutor and mentor. And you actually get an opportunity to choose the school that you are interested in, in volunteering in. And so we hope that you will take an opportunity to stop at our table and pick up one of our flyers for the strategic plan, as well as sign up to be one of our hero volunteers. Thank you.
Now, it's my honor to introduce Dr. Davis from the Ferguson-Florissant School District. Joe has been great for our district, very innovative, energetic, connects well with every stakeholder in the district, and I've come to have a lot of admiration for him. But I also want to thank, and maybe I'll let you do that too, Larry LaRue for filling in, in-between directors, and just really helping be the, some of the glue that really keeps the Ferguson-Florissant School District together. Dr. Davis.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Snyder. I'll be brief. I am grateful to be serving as superintendent of the Ferguson-Florissant School District. Being a first-generation college student in my family, and knowing the value of a great education is critically important, and we have been working extremely hard to improve behavior and improve academic outcomes for all children. Having moved to Florissant, Ferguson and Florissant, and moving here from North Carolina, I can't help but think about what's going on now. My mom's there, and my wife's folks are there, and the hurricane's coming, so that's always on my mind. I just wanted to acknowledge that now. But I can tell you that it is so important across this country to educate children well. And we know that when all children are educated well, then our communities are better, they're safer, economic development is a huge part, education is a huge part of that. And that's what we've been doing at Ferguson-Florissant, is focusing on how do we educate all children well? It's not just enough to graduate from high school. We need students graduating from high school with the skills they need, they need to be smart. They need the skills to be able to come back into the community and to put money back into the community, so that when I retire, and I have a 13-year-old who's in our district, I want to be able to retire and enjoy my life, and we want to be able to do that for you. And so we feel strongly about how we value public education. So I want to thank you for the opportunity. We're doing a lot of work in Ferg-Floor, largely, you've probably heard about the restructuring we're doing. And we are gonna be focusing more keenly on our pre-K2 group of students. We have too many students come to us who aren't ready for learning. They haven't had early education, they haven't had early learning, when they're three and four-year-olds. And then we also focus on students by the time they leave high school and go off to, if they decide to go off to college. We figure if we get them early and train them all the way through, when they're done in 12th grade, it's their choice to go to college. But I want every student who goes through us to take the AP Calculus test and make a perfect score. And if they decide they want to open up a plumbing business or a transportation business, I want them to have those skills to be able to contribute to our economy, and that's critically important. So we've been working hard to that end. We have quite a few folks here with me, I won't start calling all their names, but I just am grateful because we're doing great work, because we have a great team of people who believe in Ferguson-Florissant and our municipalities. I can say that our graduation rate is the highest it's ever been. We, when I got here four years ago, we were like around 76. We're proud to say we have about an 85.1% graduation rate this year. That's huge. That's huge. The statistics tell us, when students have a high school diploma, they have more earning power. And the more earning power they have, the more money they put back into our economy, so that we can keep it cycling over. We want 100%, and not only do I want them graduated, but I want them graduating with the skills. Couple of quick things. We will be having our restructuring meeting on the 26th of September, a couple of weeks from now, a couple of, about a week or two from now, from, at McClure High School, it's gonna be at 6:00 PM, talking specifically about how we plan to do restructuring in our district. Across the street, you know, we are no longer housed across the street in the administration building, we've moved to 8855 Dunn Road. The board is making a lot of decisions about our buildings, because we want to be fiscally responsible with the dollars that you give us. Your tax dollars, we want to spend them well. We're accountable to you about how we spend those tax dollars, and we want to put them in our schools, and particularly in our classrooms. We also invite you, October 20th, to come to Little Creek, just off of Dunn Road, Little Creek's 50th anniversary. We're gonna have a huge celebration over there on the 20th, getting ready for celebrating all the resources in our community. Last night, we had our first board meeting in our new building, and the board took an opportunity to recognize our mayor, Mayor Snyder. Let's give him another round of applause. So I can tell you, since I've been here, Mayor Snyder has been nothing but a friend to me, has been, you know, someone who I could call and talk to, and he's just been really supportive of Ferg-Floor, been one of our biggest champions as we make our district the best it can possibly be. And so the board honored him last night with a resolution recognizing the service that he's given to Florissant and this larger community as a whole. So I want to read this resolution really quickly, because I think it's noteworthy to take the time to honor someone like Mayor Snyder, who has done a yeoman's job at bringing people together, all people, black people, white people, all people together, so that we become one, not only district united, as our mantra is, but one community united, so that we all come together, because we all have to work together, live together, and make our country the best it can possibly be. So the resolution reads as follows. "Mayor Snyder, whereas Thomas P. Snyder has promoted and served the Florissant community for approximately 40 years as a member of the city council from 1979 to 2011 as mayor, and as mayor since 2011. And whereas Mayor Snyder has recognized that public education is a cornerstone in every successful community. And whereas Mayor Snyder understands that the vitality of the Ferguson-Florissant School District is essential to the progress of not only the city of Florissant, but of the St. Louis metropolitan area altogether. And whereas Mayor Snyder has made education in our community one of his priorities, collaborating on a variety of annual civic and educational events. And whereas Mayor Snyder has served as an advisor to me, a mentor, and promoter of good citizenship in our schools by speaking about the legacy of American presidents and the great leaders to enrich the lives of students. And whereas Mayor Snyder's leadership has consistently prompted citizens to take responsibility for the welfare of our children and provide our schools with the resources they need to prepare good citizens for tomorrow. And whereas Mayor Snyder's commitment to public service has enriched our community to the betterment of all, now therefore be it resolved that the Ferguson-Florissant Board of Education recognizes Mayor Snyder's achievements and his contributions to the North St. Louis community, and specifically to the city of Florissant and the schools of Ferguson-Florissant, and expresses its appreciation and gratitude for those contributions, and wishes him well in the years to come." And this was done on the 12th of September 2018 by order of the Ferguson-Florissant Board of Education. Please join me again in congratulating Mayor Snyder.
Well, that concludes our meeting. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I tell you, that was a very humbling experience to realize that, you know, in the very first meeting in the new boardroom, which is probably gonna be there for many, many decades, that they honored me. That was very humbling. Before we go too much further, there's a couple of people in the room that aren't on the program that I'd like to thank very, very much. I'd like to thank our former Public Works Director, Lou Jurles, who's a member in the audience, he didn't know I was gonna do this. Lou Jurles served the city for 37 years. Lou, thanks for all your dedication to the city of Florissant. He's gonna continue to, he's a resident of Florissant, you're, he's not going away, he's gonna, you're gonna see him at all the functions and everything. He may have to stand on a chair for you to see him, but he's gonna be there. Another person I'd like to recognize that helped me a lot, helped me with my campaigns, helped Theodore Roosevelt with his campaign. I'm serious, I'm serious. She helped Theodore Roosevelt, she helped Harry Truman, she helped Bill Clinton, she helped Jimmy Carter, she helped Barack Obama, she did everything she could to help Hillary Clinton, she helped all the Democratic governors. When I asked her, I had a TV show interviewing this lady, and we talked about all the Democrats that she helped, and I asked her, "Let's, let's talk about, let's talk about maybe one of the Republicans that you admired." And she thought about it for a second, and she said, "I can't think of anybody." Anyway, Bernice, would you stand, please? It's people like Bernice, and a lot of you also, people that are willing to work the system, you know, it's a messy system, democracy, republic, government, it's messy, it's not perfect, but it's the best that mankind's found so far. Lincoln said, "It's mankind's last great hope to avoid tyranny." And it takes work, it takes people behind the scenes, and Bernice was one of those, so thank you, Bernice. Next person who is, I'm gonna introduce is also a very hard worker behind the scenes, has been a hard worker behind the scenes, he's a committee man with the Democratic Party, very involved in activities to benefit those hard-working men and women who are union members, was in the middle of the fight to defeat Prop A, and he's one of our city council members, he's the council vice president, Tim Jones.
Well, it's good to see everybody here tonight. I try to make this as much as possible, you guys, I'm very pro-senior. We have two more of our council members here, Jackie Pagano and Robert Parsons. I'd like to brag a little bit, you guys, we are a very proactive council. On your guys' town hall meeting agendas, the phone number of your councilman is on the back of here, and the more feedback we get out of the streets, you guys, the more we can get done. So don't feel like you're bothering us, pick up the phone and call us, you guys. We work very good with this administration, we work hand-in-hand, you guys, because it just don't take your councilperson to get this done. It comes through us, we pass it on to the administration, and then we make sure the administration did it in the fashion that we wanted it done. So like I said, you guys, they're not bothering us at all, and any subject that comes up... So like I said, you guys, they're not bothering us at all, and any subject that comes up, please pick up your phone. We're trying to get away from going home and kicking the table, saying that guy didn't do nothing. Well, we don't know, we can't read minds. Just pick up the phone or shoot us an email. We will get back with you. If you don't get us in the first try, try one of the other councilmen. He's probably busy at the time. But we are very proactive, and I will brag about that. But we need you guys to participate and pick up the phone and call us. Another thing I'd like to say, you guys, as a councilperson, since I have been, there's four things that stick out in my mind personally. To bring people in this community and keep people in this community is our police force, which we have one of the top-of-the-line police forces. I appreciate you guys coming out, voting for Prop P to keep our guys and keep them up to standards. Another thing is our streets. We prop, Prop S came up, and you guys passed that overwhelmingly. That is to keep our streets good. Our housing is the third one, you guys. We went after an ordinance called A&R, and it's the rent ordinance. We're not treating them any different than anybody else, but we're letting them know you have to keep your houses in line just like us homeowners do. So we did that. But the school districts is another one, you guys. That is a very big part of this city. Without these school districts, this city would fall down. So we work hand in hand. But them are four very important things to draw young families into this and to continue what we have here. I do hope someday that I am sitting in this ordinance in one of these chairs, just like you guys are here, because I'm not leaving this city. But thanks for coming out this evening. And like I said, you guys need something, reach out to your councilperson. Thanks.
You know, I just, you know, we have, talking about our legislature, and I've been following the special on Mark Twain on PBS. If you haven't seen it, it's really good. It's two parts. And he had a lot of sarcastic things to say about legislators, but we'll save that for another day. Let's take just a second to say a little silent prayer to ourselves for those that are going to be affected by Hurricane Florence. Thank you. As Councilmember Jones mentioned, you know, we have a great supportive community, and you supported the Ferguson, Florissant School District with the property tax increase that Johnny Landoff and I went on the radio and newspaper ads, and we did a robo-call with Johnny's Voice, and I said, "I want to thank him for his help with the district." And we were able to get them the revenue that they need to be the great district that they are today. And you guys were the ones that voted for that, so that was great. And then when, a long time ago, I'll ask how far back I go, but some of you are going to remember this, when we had Fight Crime for a Dime, and we built the police station back in 1981, you supported the city. Every time the city has come to the voters, or the school district, the voters have supported our public institutions. You supported the A&R, you supported Prop S, you supported Prop P, and I'm going to ask you to support Prop D, which is on the November ballot. I'm working very hard on that. I was on the transportation, Missouri Transportation Task Force, 21st Century Task Force, and we had stakeholders from all over the state. We have stakeholders from all over the state saying that this is needed. If you look at the overpass at 270 in Florissant Road, there's netting underneath the bridge to keep concrete chunks from falling on the vehicles. That condition exists all over the state, and if we don't do something now to catch up on inflation, because it was 1996 was the last time that we had a gas tax increase, and so this 10 cents that's going in there now is just going to give us the same buying power as we had in 96, but at least we got to have that. And MODOT's been a very good steward of our tax dollars, and so I hope you'll give consideration to it. There's a website, it's called safermo.com, and if you would look at that website and see the information in there about the condition of our highways and why this is important. And Governor Parson is for it, and Lieutenant Governor Kiel is for it. It's a bipartisan support. There's really no organized opposition. And the court case that's challenged it was resolved this week, is no further challenge. So it will be on the ballot in November, and, you know, if it doesn't pass, the city is going to, this state, right now it's the 46th in funding for the seventh-most highway miles. And so I hope you'll give that serious consideration. At this time, I'd like to invite somebody that was born in this city, you know, and he was tempered by war on crime, by his whole family. We just laid to rest his father, Bob. Bob Lowery, we're going to, we're going to put a sidewalk plaque, we already have, it's already been installed, we're going to dedicate it on the 26th of September, last Wednesday night out before Handel's, at 5:45. We're going to dedicate a plaque in the sidewalk for the late Chief and Mayor Robert Lowery. And he's still alive, he's still with us through his children. He's got a son who's in the FBI, David, in Tennessee or Kentucky, I think, and then his brother, I mean, his son, Robert Jr., is in Quantico, Virginia with the Missing Persons Bureau. But fortunately for us, Tim Lowery is our chief of police, and I'd like to introduce him right now. Chief?
Hope everyone can hear me. I hope, I'm good. First thing I want to say is that I know this will shock everybody, but I've actually been employed here for 29 years in the city of Florissant. And the reason I bring that up is I've had the opportunity to work for three mayors, Mayor Egan, my father, and Mayor Schneider for the last eight years. In 2013, he appointed me police chief, and I'm going to tell you this, is that he's a very loyal and dedicated man, loves the city of Florissant. And sorry to see him retire, but I totally understand. I mean, he wants to spend time with his family. But I just wanted to acknowledge his 42 years here with the city of Florissant. Thank you, Mayor. And then the other good news is that I'm going to be very brief. The bad news is all of my fellow department heads are going to speak also, so sit and relax. I want to first introduce my command staff and my important key members that are here today. So after the, we get done talking here, please reach out to them and speak with them. First, my assistant chief, Major Tim Fagin is over here. In the back, I've got my two captains. I've got Captain Randy Bowden, he's in charge of my support services. Captain Vince Godfrey, he's in charge of all the uniform officers. Lieutenant Dehart, he's in the suit, he's my commander of investigations. They're making me work hard to find them all. I've got Sergeant Andy Harmon back there, he's in charge of the traffic division. So if you've got traffic issues, any traffic issues, speed, guys running stop signs, cars that aren't registered, Andy's the man to talk to because he deals with all those issues, so you'll be here the longest. Then I got Officer Steve Michael over here. Steve Michael is our public information officer. And just entered the room is Officer Lori Mant, and the most important member of the police department, Eddie. Oh, one more. I can't forget the senior member of my police department, Officer Gary Shladak. He's code enforcement. So it's, so you've got that nasty house, you've got that house next door to you that's got those cars that have expired license plates, or the house just looks terrible. Gary's the man to talk to about that. Just a couple of things I want to talk about coming up at the police department. On October the 2nd, it's a Tuesday night, at 5:30, is the night that we're doing National Night Out. And what we encourage is that everybody has block parties. Last year, I think we had 10. I like to see 20 or 30, but just getting out, you know, somebody to organize it, just have a block party. Myself, the mayor, my command staff, key members of my police department will be there. The fire department always sends a fire truck to all the block parties, so I really encourage that. It's just a great way to get out and meet your neighbors, and then of course, visit with the policemen, firemen. So we really encourage that. That's October 2nd. October the 3rd, from 9:00 to 10:30, we're going to have a coffee with the cop. It's going to be at the Florissant City Diner on St. Francis Street, right across from City Hall, so I really encourage everybody to come out. Great opportunity in the kind of relaxed atmosphere to interact with myself, the police officers, so I encourage you guys to come there. And then something new we're going to try, because I get so many people say that the coffee with the cop is great, except a lot of people work, so we're going to try something on October 17th. We're going to have a meet and greet of the police officers from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Gettumer House. If you don't know where the Gettumer House is, it's 1067 Dunn Road, right behind the Shell Station. And so we're going to try that from 6:00 to 7:30, where the working people, or anybody's obviously invited, but the working people who don't get to come to coffee with the cop, they can come and see us there, and the same kind of atmosphere, just a nice, relaxed atmosphere, giving you guys the opportunity to just interact with the officers. Of course, we host the AARP classes. I'm sure many of you have been to them. And the next class is November the 13th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Police Department. I don't think it's scheduled yet. Peggy may tell me differently, but we are going to host some more of the confrontation avoidance and safety classes for seniors, and I know a lot of you have attended that. They're great classes. I think October, November, we've got those coming up, and we'll get that information out to you. Tom Jost, former sergeant here, he's an international trainer in law enforcement, and he does a great job. If you guys have not had an opportunity, please come out. You can be as physical or non-physical as you want, but he's got a lot of great ideas and great tactics that, you know, if you have a confrontation with somebody that's negative, how to help deal with that. So programs we started, this year we started the Cops in Schools program with both of our school districts and our parochial schools. And the whole idea of this program is just to get the officers that ride the beats to stop by, interact with staff at the school, interact with the kids, maybe on the playground, maybe play basketball with them, maybe sit down and have lunch with them, totally just to stop by and just have a confrontation, not a confrontation, an interaction with the police officers in a different way, just so, you know, the staff understands and knows who the officer is that rides that beat, and the kids get to see the police officers in a different light. Neighborhood Watch program, I always pitched that. I tell you that, as I've said it many times, I mean, there's nothing better that you guys could do for your neighborhood than be active in the Neighborhood Watch program. It certainly helps us, but it certainly helps your neighborhood. No one knows your neighborhood better than you guys do, and of course, you get, you interact with your other neighbors, you talk about issues that are going on, you know, meet the new neighbors that just moved in. Neighborhood Watch is a great program. Steve Michael is in charge of that. Please stop by and see him. And then just a couple of other things. I just want to talk about crime real quick, and then I'll get off of here because I know there's a bunch of people behind me. This year-to-date, right now, we have seen a small increase in stealing cases, just a small increase, nothing that I'm alarmed with, and that we have seen a decrease in violent crimes, so that's the good news. But I'll be here, I'll be right over here. If you guys need to talk to me, you've got any issues, please stop by or just say hi. Thanks.
You know, Gary Shladak and I go back a long ways with the city, and we're both going out within a couple of months of each other, and so we appreciate it, appreciate working with Gary. He's great in our code enforcement division. But let me just say a word about the chief. You know, we had a great police department, we always had a great police department, but, you know, I knew that the bar could be raised just a little bit higher under his leadership, and he surpassed every expectation. We have, I think we have the best police department in the country. I really do. And at this time, I'd like to introduce one of our new department heads, Todd Hughes. He took over from Lou Gerrels. Lou Gerrels helped get him indoctrinated, and Todd is pretty much fully under his own steam now. Todd has got his own ideas about how to do things, so we're going to see a little bit different approach, a little bit different approach in snow removal technique. He's going to tell you about some of the innovations that he wants, and I had asked him for, and a lot of people, for biographies, and I've got a whole stack of biographies here. Instead of getting bogged down and looking for biographies, I'm going to have him tell you a little bit about himself personally, his family, his hobbies, where he's been, what his priorities are, what his hobbies are and stuff. And Todd Hughes, come on up.
Thank you for allowing me to come in here and speak to you guys this morning. I appreciate that. Maybe raise the microphone up a little bit. Okay. So my name's Todd Hughes. I've worked for several municipalities in my career. I've worked for the city of Bridston, I've worked for the city of St. Charles, the city of Webster Groves, and St. Charles County. I live in Maryland Heights, so I live in the northwest quadrant, just south of Bridston. I've got a wife and three kids. The oldest is in college now. The youngest is in eighth grade at Remington Traditional School in the Pattonville School District. I've been active before in Cub Scouts, helped with Boy Scouts as well. I really enjoy going, doing the camping, canoeing, the outdoor stuff with my boys. I've now learned, now found a new passion in watching my daughter play soccer. She enjoys soccer a lot. She is, she is very passionate about that as well. She'd like to, one of her aspirations is to join the women's national team. I don't know if she's that good, but she's, she's pretty good. Some of the ideas that I have brought to the mayor and asked to do, one of the major ones is looking at snow and ice control. There is a process, it's called anti-icing, is where you go in and you treat the road before the storm event happens. You use a liquid solution of salt and water. The water evaporates off, and it leaves the salt sitting on the road. That's different than the way we do it now. Right now, we would spread salt on the road, and a lot of times, if you spread it out before the storm event, it will get scattered by the traffic as the traffic goes through. This would eliminate that scatter because it would apply it in the solution to the roadway, so it'd stick in all the nice crevices that you have in your roads and stick to the roadways itself so it wouldn't be wasted. And as a benefit, you can apply it up to 72 hours before a storm event happens, so you can get out and get that done well in advance so that you can use your workforce more efficiently. You don't need to call them in hours before you think the storm's going to hit. You can wait until you know that storm's going to hit, then call them in because you've already got product, protection on the roadways so that they'll have time to get in and then start their process. Another thing that we've started in Public Works is a new permitting software. We are going to streamline a lot of our permitting processes using computers. We're going to have it so that when you come in, you can go to a computer, enter all your information in to apply for a permit, or you can still fill out the forms that we have. We're also going to work at pushing that into an internet setting as well so that if you want, you can do it from your house. Get on your computer at your home or your phone, if you've got a smartphone, and be able to apply for that application as well, as well as request inspections. Along with that, if you have an inspection, and for some reason that inspection doesn't pass while you're sitting there talking with the inspector, that inspector can reschedule that for you right then, and you don't have to call back in to try to reschedule that. So that's, that's something very exciting for, for the Public Works Department because we will be a lot more nimble with the way that we can do our processes that way. We can be much more responsive to the community. So we're working hard with the IT department. We just kicked that project off yesterday. We have a very aggressive schedule. We're hoping to have something usable in 17 weeks. The next meeting is actually today. We're talking about, you know, how we want, want some of this stuff to look and that type of stuff, so we've got that going. Also today with me, Gary Meyer is our street superintendent. He's sitting along beside me, so if you guys have any questions about the streets, he will be able to help answer those as well. I'm going to keep it real brief. I want to take the time to thank Mayor Schneider for allowing me this opportunity to serve you guys. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Mr. Gerrels as well. He has helped transition me into this, into this position, and I really appreciate the help that he's given me. It's been really nice to have him be there to ask questions to so he can pass down his wisdom to me. Thank you, guys.
This year, I asked Gary Meyer and Kevin Green, I'll ask Kevin up a little bit later, but Gary is our street superintendent, so he's the guy in charge of the field force in Public Works. I'd like him to introduce himself.
Hello. I'm Gary Meyer. I'm the street superintendent. I've worked for the city for 23 years now, and I've enjoyed working for the city all that time, and if you have any questions, concerns... And if you have any questions, concerns afterwards, I'll be over here with Todd, anything to do with the streets, potholes, snow questions, anything with our maintenance. So, thank you for coming.
At this time, I'd like to ask the person that takes care of all the city records to come up, Karen Goodwin. She's been our City Clerk for quite a while, and I think her tenure is probably approaching that of any City Clerk that we've ever had before. So, but she's, and she's so young.
Thank you. How do I follow that? I don't have anything else to say. Yes, I have been here for, let's see, I'm going on sixteen years now, believe it or not. I can't hardly believe that. And the first thing I ask my students when I teach is, who knows what a City Clerk is? Most people, most of my students, will just stand there and look at me, because most people don't really understand what a City Clerk does, or a City Clerk is, but, because we're kinda behind the scenes. So, my office takes care of a multitude of things, including record requests, of course. We maintain all the historic records. We do liquor licenses. We maintain the Boards and Commissions list, which is something that a lot of you volunteer for, special use transfers. So, we do a lot of, a multitude of different things. But the one thing that we are very passionate about is working with the council and the mayor, and taking care of city business, and keeping the agendas correct, and making sure that they have everything that they need to make the decisions that they need to make. The other thing that we like to promote is voter registration. We also take care of that in our office, and the Finance Department does that as well. But I was informed recently, which I didn't even know, that you can actually register to vote online. And so, if anybody asks you, that's a possibility. We do it at City Hall, you can do it online. And there's also, the Missouri, the state of Missouri at this point will help someone if you don't have a Missouri ID, 'cause if you don't have a driver's license, the state of Missouri will help you to get a Missouri ID in order to be able to vote. So, that's one thing that I think we need to keep promoting and continue to promote, and make sure that everybody gets out and votes when it's necessary. So, that's all I have.
I wanna introduce somebody that takes care of the Community Development Block Grant Program, that we have money from the federal government still. We're fifty thousand, we're above fifty thousand, we're eligible to do our own Community Development Block Grant Program. If you're under fifty thousand, you have to be, you know, pooled with the rest of St. Louis County. But in addition to that, we also have an inventory of all the different public service organizations that can help those that are having trouble for one reason or another. There's a lot of agencies out there, we have some of them here today. But we need to have, and we're fortunate here to be a big enough city to have an ombudsman, somebody that can kinda help you find the resource that you need when things aren't going well in your life for some reason. And the city is beyond the scope of city government, but it's more in the area of social services. We're not a social services agency, but we won't, we don't wanna tell anybody, not our job. So, we're fortunate to have Carol O'Meara, that has an inventory of all the places where you can get help if the city can't help you, and also to help you if you're eligible for Community Development Block Grant money, to help keep your property looking good and up to code. We have some federal money that can help with that, if you're income-eligible.
Well, he just kinda said it all. No. Like he said, my name's Carol O'Meara. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development. I've been with the city for nine years. Before that, I was over at the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, yes, across the river. I know, I know, I feel your pain. But that is where I became very involved in the social service aspect, and learning how to help our residents, and what kind of resources are out there. As Councilman Jones had stated earlier, one of the priority needs of the city is to maintain housing stock in our neighborhoods, in our community. And when they have residents that call them and don't know where to turn, or have housing needs, we get calls from council people and say, you know, what can you do for them? As the chief stated, Mr. Schladick is our Code Enforcement Officer. He's out in the neighborhoods, looking to see, you know, what areas need to be addressed to maintain our housing stock. They call us and say, Carol, what can you do for the, what can you do for us? What can you do for them? We have Public Works that have Code Enforcement inspectors, they have the Health Department that are out in the communities. They call us when they see a need, and they say, Community Development, what can you do for our residents? We are the Can Do Department. What can we do for you? You call our department, and we will see what we can do for you. If you hear a theme here, it's because our department is the one department in the city that we can actually try to do something for you, other than writing you up, or just letting housing stock fall apart. We need to maintain our housing stock, and our department is the Can Do Department that can help do that. Like the mayor said, we also have other resources available to us, that if we can't do something for you, which we don't like the word "can't," but if we can't do something in our office, we will turn to other resources, we can try to connect you with people. And sometimes, it's just a matter of the residents not knowing where to begin. And so, pretty much in a nutshell, we have several programs, that if you wanna find out more about it, or if you know a resident that is in need of something, you call our office, and we'll see what we can do for you.
See the guy with the camera in the back? That's Chris Pulliam. You'll see him in a lot of events, or, we have a bunch of part-time camera people, too, that help us keep, document the wonderful life here in Florissant. You know, we document the Fall Festival, the Valley of Flowers, the Wednesday Night Outs, and just a lot of different events, the different, like today's event. And his boss is Kerry Luster, in charge of our Media Department.
Yes, I'm the man behind the curtain. I had notes, and I left them on the table, so I'm gonna wing it. Most of you've seen me, you know what I do. I run the television station, charter Channel nine ninety-two, U-verse, Channel ninety-nine. I also am charged with the Florissant Focus, which should be out in about a week before the Fall Festival, so keep an eye out for that. We really try hard to keep up on what's going on in the technical field, in media, in television. It's really difficult, because I'm not as tech-savvy as Steve Weisemiller over there, gentleman standing up. He is the IT person, so I'll call him occasionally and get some advice on certain IT things. But my brain is analog-like everyone out there, and I'm having to think digital, and it keeps wanting to go back to analog and go into digital, and I just get kinda nuts with that. But I work hard at it. So, if you have questions, and I know you do, you can just come over and ask me. If I don't have the answer, I'll get it from him, but we'll get you an answer. If you have a question about anything that's on television, let me know, I can talk to you about that as well. But, you know, like the mayor said, we shoot everything. We did the nine eleven ceremony, we'll be doing the Fall Festival, we do the Valley of Flowers, FPD roll call, Peggy's show, oh my gosh, there's just a ton of them, more than you guys probably know about. Tune in sometimes and just take a look. You'd be surprised at all the information you can glean from that television station.
Since Kerry mentioned Steve Weisemiller, I'm gonna ask Steve to come up. Steve is our IT Director. It's a new department. As you can imagine, you know, the world is very different now than it was thirty years ago, twenty years ago. We can see some big changes, like it's not only, you don't have to wait ten years to see changes, changes in one year. You know, we go to Windows six, seven, eight, nine, ten, XP, and all that kinda stuff. So, Steve Weisemiller is just a, I think he's just a genius when it comes to IT. He's been with us, like a lot of great employees that we've had, for a long, long time, and doing something, not even, he's kinda, he kinda learned this on the job. And when we had to troubleshoot a couple of years ago, 'cause we had a big problem with some data being lost in one of our departments, so we did a SWAT analysis, and it became apparent to me that Steve was the guy that we could hitch our wagon to and get into the next several decades with IT technology. And I'm just very, very happy that we have Steve in charge of, now we have three people under him, or we used to just have two. We have a whole, he's a department head now, and the city's better off for it.
Good morning. My name is Steve Weisemiller. I've worked for the city of Florissant for over twenty-two years. I started off as a teenager, cutting grass for the Parks Department. I worked as a nine-one-one dispatcher for the Police Department here for ten years. Then after that, I got my IT degree through Lindenwood University, and took over as IT Manager of the Police Department for ten years. And that in and of itself was a very rewarding career. And then, the mayor gave me the opportunity to take over as IT Director, and I'm gonna take off from there. It's, I love working for the city of Florissant, and serving its employees and the residents here. It is a great place to work. I was born and raised here, on St. Louis Street, and I care a lot about this city. As the mayor said, our IT Department consists of myself as a director, two IT Managers, and one IT Support Technician. With this staff of only four people, here are just a few of the things we take care of on a day-to-day basis. Internet access, video surveillance, electronic door access, our network infrastructure, hundreds of computer workstations, dozens of servers, telephone systems, all of our city cellphones, software support, all of the police technology, cloud technology, and anything else that comes up on a daily basis. The job is challenging, and it's hard to keep up, the hours are long, but the employees that we have now in the IT Department truly do enjoy it, and we really do enjoy serving the employees of the city of Florissant. We have some of the finest employees around, and it is a great place to work.
We've had a little bit of turnover this last year, and we had to replace about five-hundred years of experience this year alone. But not only this year, our Human Resource Director came to us from Ferguson before the incident, she came to us before the incident, and she's been with us for about five years now. She's my hero this year. We had a lot, we had to roll up our sleeves, and we did a lot of internal promotions. We selected Steve with the help of Sonya. We selected Todd. I'm gonna introduce our new Finance Director later in the program. She helped me find, helped us find her. Just a fantastic job. We have the best Human Resource Department in the state, Sonya Brooks White.
Well, I don't know how to follow that. I don't know how to follow that. Well, thank you, Mayor, and actually, I wanna take this opportunity to also thank him for this opportunity, 'cause I have been here for about five years, and he brought me on along with the former Director, Chris Roth. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to work for the city of Florissant. I appreciate, and have enjoyed working with him as, and, you know, as you round out your tenure here, so. But I am Sonya Brooks White. I am the Director of Human Resources, and as I said, I have been with the city for a few years, and I really, truly enjoy coming and meeting with you on this Town Hall meeting. The city actually has two-hundred-and-thirty full-time employees, approximately one-hundred part-time employees, and we hire about a hundred-and-fifty seasonal employees. And as he said, through, you know, this has been a very challenging year for us, with a lot of transitions, and, but, you know, we've made it through, and we've just moved along, and we've hired a lot of great people, and we've had the opportunity to promote internally, which has been very, I know employees have really appreciated that, so. And with that, you know, one of the things that we've done this year that has been really successful is that we've gone online, which is something that the city really needed to do. So, now, applicants can go online and apply for positions within the city. And one of the things that we appreciate and love is we love residents in our community who come and apply and work with us. So, come see me, check out our positions online, tell your family members, we'd love to have you a part of our community.
You know, Lou's already retired, and we got Officer Schladick's gonna retire, but at the same time, I do. Another person that's in the process of retiring, that's given the city a great deal of service, and has helped our economic development continue to thrive. You know, we have businesses just booming on Lindbergh. It's just booming. And one of the reasons for that is our Economic Development Director, Bob Russell. Bob is going to be retiring. You know, I was talking about that seventy landmark, well, I don't think, it happened for him a little while back. But Bob is a great friend and a great advocate for progress in Florissant, and I'm just gonna let him introduce himself, and kinda, and sort of say goodbye, like I have.
Morning, everyone. I'll quote General MacArthur, "Old soldiers never die, they just fade away." Since our last Town Hall meeting last year, we've opened eighty-two new businesses and creating hundreds and hundreds of jobs. Some of the, I'll go over a few of them, some of the completed projects since the last Town Hall meeting. Total Urgent Care, Popeye's Chicken, U-Haul Storage, six-million-dollar facility, Regions Bank, Raising Canes, Crazy Bowls and Wraps, and DeVita Dialysis. Under construction now, is a, there's a lot of money under construction. First Collinsville Bank on New Halls Ferry Roads, under construction. Dunkin' Donuts on Lindbergh, Chick-fil-A in Florissant, in the Florissant Valley Shopping Center, and Aspen Dental in the Florissant Valley Shopping Center, and Mod Pizza. There's about twelve or thirteen million dollars of development going on on the corner of Lindbergh and New Halls Ferry. In addition to that, the Siteman Cancer Center is under construction, twenty million dollars at Grayman two-seventy. Just a few more things. Finally, after three years, there's gonna be a new tenant in Barnes &amp; Noble. There's gonna be a half-a-million-dollar renovation in that space. Barnes &amp; Noble closed three or four hundred stores simultaneously across the country three years ago. But Ross Dress for Less will be going into Barnes &amp; Noble space. Just a few other things. There are two entities that are in due diligence for, and interested in the renovation of the bank building across the street from City Hall. And there are several developers in the due diligence assembly process of properties for more development on Lindbergh. I've been with the city eighteen years. It's been a great ride.
We had a Parks Director that started here as a lifeguard. Todd Schmidt did a wonderful job for the city of Florissant, and he retired. And we were wondering, how are we gonna fill those shoes, because, you know, he's been here forever? And so, Cheryl Thompson stepped forward, and she offered to do, she was, she's our recreation, was our Recreation Director. She offered, she said, "Let me give a shot, let me take a shot at this, I can do this." And so, I've given Cheryl an opportunity to step into the Park Director job, and she's done a very, very good job of filling in interim Parks Director, and is a very, and a leading candidate for permanent Park Director. Cheryl Thompson has been with us for a few years, and she's really stepped up and put in a lot of hours to try to bridge the gap for us. I'd like to introduce Cheryl Thompson.
Morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you, first of all, to the Egan Center. My name is Cheryl Thompson. This is probably the fifth community that I've worked for. I started out in my career as a lifeguard for the city of Belleville, and then I started to work after graduating college for the city of Belleville. Then I went to University City for twenty years. Then I went to University City for 20 years and also worked for St. Louis County, the city of Berkeley. I was the Parks Director there and about seven years ago, I came here. So here I am. I'm very thankful to the mayor for allowing me to take over as the Park Director, the Acting Director and see where we go from here. So I've got a few things I'd just like to tell you about myself. Love my grandkids. They're my best thing that's ever happened to me in my life. And just love to sit at home and read underneath the trees and listen to the birds. So we're always so glad, the staff at the Egan Center is always so glad when we know we have a senior activity coming up because you are always so good to us, walk in the doors with smiling faces, looking forward to an activity and we're really glad that you enjoy our facility. I think some of the times you've also been to the JFK Center to have a few activities over there. So we have, we're very lucky in this community that we have two community centers to serve you. When I took over the job of Director, I was very blessed with some great employees and our former Superintendent of Parks, who was with us for over 40 years, also retired. And I was blessed with the promotion of Kevin Green, not Kevin Green, I'm sorry, Kevin, yeah, Kevin Green from, he was formerly with the Street Department. He is now our Superintendent of Parks. And when he gets up here, he'll tell you a few things about how long he's been here. He's been here since we had a water department. So he's a wealth of knowledge to our department and we're very blessed to have him. I just wanted to list just a few programs that we have and I have some flyers over on the table about those that really are geared more towards you. We belong to the Silver Sneakers Program and I have a flyer over there that will tell you if you have certain insurances like Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Anthem, AARP, some of those insurances. If you call your insurance company and find out if they belong to the Silver Sneakers Program, you can come in, get you signed up and then come into our front desk at either center and you can get a membership to the facility for free. The Silver Sneakers Program pays for your membership. So you can come in, work out in the fitness. We like to see you stay healthy and young as you are and you know, come out, walk on the treadmill for a little while, ride a bike, come in and go swimming. So we'd love to see you participate in that. Another program that we have that our seniors really love is our pickleball program. Pickleball started in Florida in a lot of the senior retirement centers. So we do this every Tuesday, Thursday and Sunday right here in the gym. We set up some nets and they come in and they play pickleball and everybody really, really loves it. A couple of other programs that we have coming up are, we are going to be hosting our 10th year anniversary of the annual Suicide Prevention Glow Run. It will be held in St. Ferdinand Park on the 22nd of this month. If you want to just buy a T-shirt, you can participate that way, but it is for a good cause and all of the funds that we raise go directly to the, I believe it's the American Suicide Prevention Organization. We also are going to be having, similar to like a trunk or treat, we're calling it Family Boobash, that will be here in our parking lot on October 27th and it'll be from 12 until 2. We are asking businesses, some of our departments will be there. Citizens can bring about enough candy for like 500 kids. We expect a lot of kids that day will have some fun activities for them to do. So I just thank you for loving our city, staying with us. One last thing I wanted to plug was, we are going to be, I know a lot of you have seen St. Ferdinand Lake, it hasn't been the healthiest ever. So we are going to be starting a renovation project on that lake probably late November. So it will be looking beautiful by the time spring gets here and we'll once again be able to stock it so you can go out and go fishing. Thank you very much.
Cheryl, I thought that was early November. Come on.
We'll see. I'm trying.
I want it done yesterday. She introduced Kevin, let's have Kevin Green come up. Kevin Green has been with us since we had a water department, as she said. Kevin Green was with the Street Department, first Water Department, then the Street Department. He was the right-hand man of Gary Meyer for several years. And this was a, we had the retirement, we had an institution retire, Bob Laramie, who was here for, served the city for 50 years. And Bob Laramie retired. We named the park yard after him. And Kevin Green had big shoes to fill, but he already had big shoes he was wearing because he was Gary's right-hand man. And now we have a marriage, a very healthy marriage between the Park Department Field Force and the Street Department Field Force so that when we have a storm emergency, snow removal or tree limbs or whatever we have to do, we've got the two departments that can work in tandem better than ever. And I'm very, very pleased that we were able to promote Kevin Green to our Park Superintendent. Kevin.
Hi there. I'm Kevin Green. I've been with the city for 39 years now. Like the mayor said, I spent 22 years in the Water Department and then worked with Gary for, I was his foreman for 17 years down the Street Department and just recently got moved to the Parks. Really enjoyed it. Sometimes change is good and I really look forward to it and we've got a lot of projects coming up that we're excited about and you'll start seeing them in some of the parks and hopefully everything goes well. Thank you very much.
Now, we used to end our program with, if you remember, Gary Gatos, you know, it was like, it was like a fireworks show going off when Gary was talking. And Sean is just as enthusiastic, he's not, he's not quite as much of a showman yet as Gary Gatos, but Sean is our theater director and is for all the performances in the theater and all the performances at their Fall Festival and the Valley of Flowers and such and our concerts in the park at St. Ferdinand Lake and a few other events this year. We're going to have a Cuban band at the Race to the Shrine, which we'll talk about in just a minute, but I'm going to have Sean Robertson come up and talk about the theater.
Good morning, or should I say good afternoon? I think it's afternoon at this point. Now, I am not Gary Gatos, no, but I actually did speak to him on the phone last week and he keeps in touch with me and makes sure I'm, you know, riding the ship. So I do want to tell you about what we've got going on, but I will tell you a little bit about myself before we start. I'm from a theater family. My father was a director and a playwright. My sister is a costume designer. I was brought up sitting in the back of houses watching shows. I know what it takes to do these things. I've also, I've been with the city since 2007. I came here on a tour, actually, for the Florissant Fine Arts Council back in 2007 that fall. And I walked in the door and I was like, "Hey, where's that guy I usually deal with?" Who was the former tech director? And they said, "We're looking to fill that position." And I said, "How you doing? My name's Sean Robertson and I can do this stuff." So let me tell you about some of these great shows we've got going on this year. Our next show is the Alpha Players production, the timeless musical, Bells Are Ringing. And that'll be opening October 5th and then run for two weekends. We've got the Fall Festival coming up. That's, we've got the Ralph Butler Band and what else have we got? That'll be at 1 o'clock and 3 o'clock during the Fall Festival. We'll close out the Music Under the Stars series at the Race to the Shrine with Bob Cuban. And the Florissant Fine Arts Council has finalized their season and that will be opening just in time for Halloween. We've got the Headless Hessian of Sleepy Hollow and Other American Horror Stories. Now, this isn't something to scare you, this is more in the style of the 1940s radio broadcasts like War of the Worlds and all the actors play, employees of the local radio station that are trying to put on this radio presentation on the night of Halloween. And some things don't quite go as planned, but it's a really fun show. We had the same troupe of actors here a couple of years ago and they did It's a Wonderful Life in the same style. Unfortunately, we had an ice storm that night, so a lot of people didn't get to see such a really fine performance. It's one of my most favorite things I've ever seen on our stage. I'm really happy to bring that same troupe of actors back for our opening of the fine arts season. It'll also include a Tale of the Lizzie Borden Axe Murders and Tale by Edgar Allan Poe, besides the Headless Horseman Tale. Continuing on with that season, we will have a Lisa Marshall, Simply the Best, it's a Tina Turner tribute show. And we had that show, I don't know what, 2011, I believe, and it nearly sold out. You're not going to want to miss this one. This woman, you wouldn't, you're going to think it's actually Tina Turner up there. They had her on the Ellen Show about two years ago and she announced her as Tina Turner. Nobody knew the difference until Ellen let everybody know who it actually was. But that'll be the second show. Our third show will be the St. Louis Theater Musicians Orchestra and that's 22 musicians from the pit from the Fabulous Fox and from the St. Louis Symphony along with Charles Glenn. You might recognize him. He's the vocal, he'll be the lead vocalist and he sings the National Anthem of the St. Louis Blues Games along with Patricia Scanlon, who is a leading soprano for the St. Louis Symphony Chorus. We'll finish our season with the Nat King Cole and Unforgettable Century, which is a tribute to Nat King Cole and it'll be, mark the 100th anniversary of his birth. Lastly, a couple more things about our seasons, not the fine arts season. We've got the North Winds Concert Band coming up. That's October 21st, Sunday afternoon, Pops Concert at 3:00 PM. Larry Marsh always does a terrific job with anything he touches within this community as far as the arts go. And the Hawthorne Players will present Lorraine Hansberry's Raisin in the Sun, directed by our theater staff's own Nancy Kraus, another staple in the Hawthorne and the community theater here. If you saw Hawthorne's production of Driving Miss Daisy, she was Miss Daisy and she is a, she's a gem. She really is. And anytime she works with us here, you know, we get the best quality artistic work out of her. The St. Louis Family Theater Series, it's our children's theater program here in Florissant. And you know, a little background information on that, a couple of years ago, our sponsors for that series, after 28 years, decided they wanted to take a break from the series. Well, the city of Florissant stepped up and took that on as our own personal project. Now, as of last year, we did four shows and we had nearly 19,000 people come through the doors to see those shows. The majority of those were children seeing theater for their very first time and we're really proud that we are that child's firsthand experience with live theater. We're going to do that series again and we're going to start with Pete the Cat. And all these titles are for the kids. We got Cat in the Hat, we got Penguin Goes to Flight School and The Ugly Duckling. It's children's theater, but it is for everybody. It is not just for the little kids. We encourage you to bring your kids or show up and come and see them for yourself because it's one hour, it's the most affordable children's theater in all of St. Louis and it's the only children's theater here in North County. So I'm really proud of that program. This is, this is a new one, you haven't heard about this one yet, so I'm dropping the ball here. I just talked with Giovanni Zope from the Zope Family Circus and his agent. This past week, we plan on having the circus return for the Valley of Flowers and that's another one. It's the only free circus you're ever going to find anywhere and we have it right here on our grounds for the Valley of Flowers Festival. We have plenty of shows for everyone. There's info on the table over here. Give us a call at the box office. Check us out online. Buy tickets. Season ticket packages, group rates, senior prices. We've got all of that here right at our Florissant Performing Arts Center, at the Florissant Civic Center Theater. What else do I got to say? Thank you for your time. Come out and see a show.
And the box office is right out that door to get your tickets. Our Finance Director, Randy McDaniel, retired this year. Randy was a great finance director. You know, he did the three things that a finance director that I really wanted to have done. He paid all the bills, we didn't have any malfeasance and we passed all the audits. But he was a man of few words, but our new Finance Director is not a lady of few words. Kimberly Johnson asked to go last, so I granted her that request. We're very happy to have Kimberly Johnson as our Finance Director and we are so pleased after only a few months, how much she has learned and she has made a big impact and we're optimistic that the budget's going to go smoothly and that we're going to be able to provide all the services that you've come to expect. Kimberly, she's going to find the money for it, right?
Yes, I will find the money. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I have so much to say, so much I want to convey to you and I, it's just not enough time. I've written it several different ways. It comes from my heart, so I don't really need a script. But my position is to find money and make sure that the services and infrastructure are continuing for the city of Florissant. And I want to give you a little background because I do have so much fun in coordinating with everybody to make this happen that you may not realize what background I do have because I have so much fun doing it. I've been in accounting for my entire life and my last jobs, I was with the DOD as a senior budget analyst and also with CBiz. I was a fiscal consultant working onsite with many different organizations, not-for-profit. So there's a long line, besides DOD, there's a long line of finding money where there's no money available in small towns and not-for-profit, finding donations, keeping the programs going for the citizens. So that's where my passion is and I hope to bring, I will bring that passion to the city of Florissant. I've lived here my entire adult life. I've raised five children here and now they are all in college, no, they're all out of college now and on their own. So now I can start reaping the benefits of being in Florissant and being able to utilize all of these services that I just didn't realize we had because I was so busy raising all those kids. So I hope that everybody does take the opportunity to go out and utilize these wonderful services. I came into the Finance Department when we were transitioning and there are six wonderful employees that I work with and they're just invaluable. They all have come from other positions in, within the city, so they know the culture and all of the employees within the city, just the few months I've been here, they're very dedicated, they're very passionate and they will go the extra mile to make things happen. It's just been wonderful to work with everybody. I am just so thankful that I landed here in my hometown.